Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening at our city council meeting. It's, uh, looks like everybody's interested in something out here today. A great crowd, thank you for being with us. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Black?
Here. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance after which if you'd remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Gina Beetz, a local resident.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh Gina, if you would walk on the other side of that and face us.
On the other side, okay, and face her, alright.
Thank you.
Get Mr. Howard there out of the way.
Alright. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I just wanted to share a few thoughts before we begin. May we all have open hearts and open minds so that we can come to positive and productive conclusions for our community. May we always be able to find the solidarity in our town, find the common ground that each of us have with one another rather than focusing on our differences. May we come together to not only serve the community as a whole but to make sure that individuals are heard and feel that their needs are addressed as well. I thank you for being here tonight and I hope that each of you will have a safe travel back to your homes at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go on and we'll move on to agenda item number three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the city council study session of February 8th and March 8th, 2018, and the study session clarification working lunch of February 15th, 2018, the budget development meetings of March 1st and March 8th, 2018, and the clarification and regular council meeting of March 1st, 2000, March 1st and 2000, March 1st and March 15th, 2018. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of March 2018. How are you Joyce?
Good evening Mayor and council members. Joyce Strashein, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the payroll and material claims report for the month of March. Payroll and material claims totaled $5,356,145. Payroll related claims, $3,445,460. We had 685 employees at the end of the month. We had changes in filled positions of a decrease in one in the full-time status, an increase of seven in the part-time status, for an overall increase of six filled positions. Vendor claims totaled $1,910,684. I've highlighted two large vendor claims for the month. Kenworth Sales Company Incorporated, $140,334. Water Department Dump Truck. Northwest Firefighter Trust Employee Benefit Trust, $191,838. Fire and ambulance medical insurance for the month of March and April. This is due to the timing of when the payments due, so we had two show up in one month. This report explains 79.59% of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I list for you the March purchase card activity. We had 1,107 transactions for the month totaling $317,970 when we had 157 cardholders who used their card. Seven purchase agents had monthly totals greater than $10,000 and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions council? Thank you Joyce.
Thank you.
We'll move on to C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Susan Puckett to continue her service as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board representing the Bannock Humane Society. Ms. Puckett's term will begin April 20, 2018 and will expire April 20, 2020. D, Acceptance of Allstate Foundation Fire Prevention Donation. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of Pocatello Fire Department staff to accept a donation from Allstate Foundation to be used for fire prevention activities. This donation is an amount up to $30,000, is similar to the previous donations received from the Allstate Foundation for fire department activities. E, Council Decision Alameda Acres Subdivision Short Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plat for Alameda Acres Subdivision which was, which subdivides approximately .67 acres of land into four residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is a replat of Lot 2, Block 1, First Edition to Richland Town Site and is zone residential medium density, single-family RMS. Lots 1 and 3 will have direct access from Grace Avenue, lots 2 and 4 from Richland Avenue. F, Council Decision Tallgrass Subdivision Short Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the short plat for Tallgrass Subdivision which subdivides approximately 7.08 acres of land into two residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located in the northwest 1, 4, southwest 1 quarter, and in the southwest 1, 4, southeast 1 quarter, Section 17 Township 7, South Ridge, 35 EBM, and is zone residential medium density, single-family RMS. Lot 1 will have direct access from Running Iron Lane while Lot 2 will be accessed via a 50-foot, 50-foot wide access and utility easement which will cross Lot 1 and provide access to Running Iron Lane. G, Council Decision Courtside Subdivision 8th Edition Final, Final Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Countryside Subdivision 8th Edition which subdivides approximately 3.06 acres of land into seven residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located southwest of Mount Shadow Drive on the final connection of Foxmore, Foxmore Street. The majority of the property is zone residential low density, RL, with a portion of Lot 4, Block 2 being zone residential estates, RE. Access will be provided by Foxmore Street. H, Council Decision Breezy Point Division 3 Final Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Breezy Point Division 3 which subdivides approximately 5.10 acres of land into 18 single-family lots, subject to conditions. The property is located east of Philbin Road and south of Quinn Road and is zoned residential medium density, single-family RMS. Brock Drive and Kinghorn Road will be extended to provide access to the development. I, Council Decision Breezy Point Division 4 Final Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Breezy Point Division 4 which subdivides approximately 3.57 acres of land into 16 single-family lots, subject to conditions. The property is located east of Philbin Road, south of Quinn Road, and is zone residential medium density, single-family RMS. Access to develop, development will be provided by an extension of Brock Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, Communication and Proclamations. I have to scan, do we have any scouts out there? I'm not seeing any scouts. Okay, well we have five, everybody gets to read something tonight. We have five different proclamations to read. National Service Recognition Day, Council Member Adamson. Soccer Week, Council Member Lurick. Civitan Awareness Month, Council President Jim Johnston. Fair Housing Month, Council Member Cheatham, and Occupational Therapy Month, Council Member Bray. We'll go in that order.
Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 3rd, 2018. Therefore, Brian Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018, to be National Service Recognition Day in Pocatello and urges residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
We're gonna go over here so you can get on TV. You can stand up and take a picture if you want.
Yeah, well I don't even know what I want.
What do you want?
I want all my AmeriCorps members.
Well, get them here. Hurry, get up here, hurry.
AmeriCorps.
Hurry, we don't have all of them. Okay. You guys gotta move faster than that. This is crazy.
We're not here in the middle.
Alright, there. Good, okay.
Got a couple of states.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You can ring a nice hit and you can photoshop it.
She'll photoshop me in front.
There you go. Councilwoman Lurick.
Okay. Whereas, the Portnife Valley Soccer Club is hosting its 31st Annual PVSC Spring Classic Soccer Tournament with teams from Idaho, Utah, Montana, and Wyoming participating, and whereas approximately 90 teams with athletes ages 10 to 19 will be in Pocatello for the three-day tournament, and whereas I wish to acknowledge the many local volunteers, officials, and generous sponsors whose time, effort, and support make this event possible for the athletes, and whereas on behalf of the citizens of Pocatello, I wish you all the best of luck and look forward to a weekend full of good sportsmanship and exciting matches. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby claim the week of April 16th through 22nd to be Soccer Week in Pocatello and urge residents to support these incredible athletes by attending a few matches April 20th, 21st, and 22nd at the Bannock Fields and Portnife Wellness Complex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We'd like to send you with the shirt and invite everybody in town to come out and watch if you suffer.
So, why don't you come right here and say it on the other side? You're in the wrong spot. That way they can get you on TV as well soon.
So we'd like to invite all of you out to come and watch a few of the soccer games. Our tournament is going to be April 19th through the 22nd, and we have a record number of teams coming into Pocatello this year, so we're really excited about that. We have almost 1,600 kids in Pocatello alone playing, so any Saturday NOP would be full. Kids, those little U3s, 4s, you know, they're great to come out and watch, so any Saturday, please come to NOP or come support our players at the tournament.
And you're whom?
I am Krista Wirth, President for Portnife Valley Soccer, and this is Jennifer Elisa Rars, our Office Manager, the heart of our club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Whereas Civitan International was founded in 1917 in Birmingham, Alabama, and whereas there is a corps of volunteers of over 40,000 men and women whose mission is to build good citizenship by providing a volunteer organization of 1,300 clubs in 34 nations dedicated to serving individuals and community needs with an emphasis on helping people with developmental disabilities, and whereas Civitan has contributed millions of dollars to help people with mental and physical development disability, and whereas Civitan promotes good citizenship and challenges all to think of citizenship as a privilege and responsibility, and whereas Civitan is recognized for its support of research and treatment of MRDD through funding of Civitan International Research Center, and whereas here in our area, Bannock Civitan Club, Civitan Twisted Stitches Club, Junior Civitan Club, and Friends Civitan Club of Pocatello do work in our community. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim the month of April, 2018, to be Civitan Awareness Month in Pocatello and encourages the residents of Pocatello to actively support and take pride in the worthwhile efforts of this international service organization in the work of Civitan in our community. Go Civitan!
Alright, super, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead Roger, top that.
This is actually Cheatham telling.
Oh, Cheatham, go ahead, try and top that.
I just wanted to clarify that at the bottom of that was not "Go Civitan!"
He's Spanish speaking, do that.
He took a pride.
From the Office of the Mayor, a proclamation. Whereas, April 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, is a requirement by law and a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and whereas equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental is the right to equal education and employment, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies, and whereas the laws of this nation, our state, and our city seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transactions involving housing, and whereas ongoing education and outreach promoted by the City of Pocatello through the CDBG Advisory Committee and the Fair Housing Resource Library at City Hall are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Pocatelans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 to be Fair Housing Month in Pocatello and urge our citizens and businesses to increase their awareness of the Fair Housing Act as amended so that all citizens will receive equal opportunities for housing in our community.
Thank you Councilman Cheatham. In celebration of the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, the City of Pocatello, in partnership with the City of Idaho Falls, the Intermountain Fair Housing Council, the Greater Pocatello Association of Realtors, and the Idaho Housing and Finance Association, will host a free housing training on May 4th here at City Hall. It is open to citizens from Pocatello, Idaho Falls, and the surrounding areas, as well as stakeholders such as architects, builders, contractors, real estate agents, and landlords. Thank you Mr. Mayor and the city council members for supporting fair housing.
Whereas, this will be the last one.
Been a lot of "whereas's" out there tonight.
Whereas occupational therapy's distinct value is to improve health and quality of life through facilitating participation and engagement in occupations, and whereas occupations are the meaningful, necessary, and familiar activities of everyday life, and whereas occupational therapy is client-centered, achieves positive outcomes, and is cost-effective, and whereas occupational therapy practitioners use their knowledge of the relationship between the person, environment, and the activity to facilitate change or growth in function, including strength, range of motion, vision, cognition, and social interaction needed for successful participation, and whereas occupational therapy practitioners enable engagement through adaptations and modifications to the environment or objects within the environment, and whereas occupational therapy services are provided for habilitation, rehabilitation, and promotion of health and wellness for clients with disability and non-disabilitating-related needs, and whereas these services include acquisition and preservation of occupational identity for those who have or are at risk for developing an illness, injury, disease, disorder, condition, impairment, disability, activity limitation, or participation restriction. Now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does proclaim April 2018 to be Occupational Therapy Month in Pocatello, and he encourages all citizens to recognize the contributions of occupational therapy practitioners and express appreciation for their commitment to promoting evidence-based practice in the hope of achieving optimum quality of life, health, and well-being for both today and tomorrow. Sign Brian C. Blad.
Hurry, hurry, where, like I said, this was a bad present that I sent. Should've done that, I apologize. Okay. Okay, we're going, let's go now. Who's got it? Okay. Perfect.
Thank you. Awesome. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. I did set a bad present. Won't do that again next time. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to the council for reading all those proclamations. Agenda item five is a calendar review. Council may take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On April 6th, 9:00 AM will be a budget development meeting. April 12th, 9:00 AM will be a study session immediately followed by an executive session. April 19th, 9:00 AM budget development meeting. April 19th, 5:30 PM clarification meeting. April 19th, 6:00 PM regular council, city council meeting. Other events, early voting for primary elections is now open through May 11th, 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Voting takes place at the Bannock County Elections Office, 141 North 6th Avenue. April 21st, Environmental Fair at Caldwell Park, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Citizens using the PRT fixed route system or special service during the environmental fair hours will ride for free to and from Caldwell Park. April 21st, Medicine Takeback Day will be part of the environmental fair. Law enforcement agencies will take back and safely dispose of unwanted medicines to keep them out of our water supply. Zoo Idaho is now open on weekends only. May 1st, Zoo Idaho will be open seven days a week. Our annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries continues. Crews will be removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. Okay, we will move to agenda item number six.
Mr. Mayor, I move we...
What, should I read it?
No, I'm gonna read it.
Go ahead. We'll jump to agenda item number six, confirmation of council member appointment Manon. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Bina Manon to serve as a city council member fulfilling an unexpired term, or an unexpired term of Steve Brown, city council member seat number two, with the appointment to be effective April 5, 2018. Upon confirmation, Ruth Whitworth, the city clerk, will administer the oath of office.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve your appointment of Bina Manon to serve city council position two.
Second.
We have a motion by council president Johnston and a second by Adamson.
Opposed.
Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
We get to make comments, don't we?
Before we call the roll, we would like comments. Absolutely, if you'd like to make some comments.
I just wanted to say that there's been a lot of talk out there, particularly with regard to contributions and the influence they've had, so I took the opportunity to meet with Bina. It's kind of like when the senate does a confirmation of an appointee, they have the right to get to know the person and to understand where they come from. I understand the angst on both sides. I understand, you know, because we've been through this once with the cemetery and struggling with that, and I understand how people would do this, but I found Bina to be a very bright and concerned citizen of our community. I found her to be a person that has really stressed that she has her own integrity that she will bring to this, that she is a person that will speak for herself and act for herself, and that her loyalty will be to the community of Pocatello first and foremost. That's the office she's being sworn into, and I just thought I needed to say that because I think that there's gonna be kickback both sides, and I understand as well that this is the mayor's decision to make, and it's Bina's decision to honor by how she conducts herself and proves herself in this position, so I wanted to get that statement out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes. You know, this is probably the most divisive issue I've faced since I've been on the, on the council in the community. I polled about 25 people in the last day or so to get opinions, and I have as many opposed to this confirmation as I have in favor of it, for a variety of reasons, and I regret that. I hope this community, once this is over, can get moved through this. It's a no-win situation for those voting in favor or against this. We'll have as many enemies in the community because of what we're about to do either way we vote.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you. So we have a motion by president Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson? Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Bina, could you please come up and Ruth will...
Actually, you're gonna be in front of that right here, I believe. Have you on this side so that camera can get you, not me? You're the, you're the star, I'm just here helping. I can get you to raise your right hand, and I'll, and then just repeat your name, okay? I, Bina Manon, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, the Laws and ordinances of the City of Pocatello, and that I will support the Constitution that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council Member in the City of Pocatello, Bannock County, Idaho, so help me God. Congratulations.
All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you to the council for that. We will make her uncomfortable maybe right now.
Not just a tiny bit.
That will move on to, unless you'd like to say anything.
No, I just want to say thank you so much for the approval. I really appreciate it, the opportunity to be here today, and I'm very dedicated to Pocatello. My heart belongs here, my family belongs here, and I look forward to giving back to my community at a different level. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 7, which is a public hearing. Public hearing contract rezone for vacant land on South First Avenue. This time it's been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Aaron Buckaloo to rezone by contract a parcel of vacant land on South First Avenue, south of Lawton Street, from residential, commercial, professional, to light industrial, to be utilized for storage and a shop for personal use. Is that it? At their meeting on February 28, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval.
Mr. Mayor?
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing, so I declare the public hearing open. Aaron?
Ex parte.
Oh, council, have you had any ex parte communication or... No, come on up here, right here while we're doing this. Ex parte communication or contact in regards to this. Okay, super. Aaron?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. My name is Aaron Buckaloo. I have requested a rezoning of my property on First Avenue from RCP to light industrial for the purposes of building a shop, a personal-use shop and storage building. The current RCP zoning would require that I build a personal residence on that piece of property before building either a joining or a separate shop, and my intent is not to build a residence, simply to build, again, a shop and storage building. Some things that I will note from my application is that certainly the surrounding uses of property around me are similar in use to what my intent is. I have spent a bit of time with Matt Lewis in planning and zoning. He's kind of helped me through this process, and so I appreciated his help. And the significant piece, I think, for me is that the long-term plan per the... I was gonna try to remember this off the top of my head, but the comprehensive planned use map does designate my piece of property and the property around it as industrial, at least in intended use in the future. I'm simply asking for light industrial zoning currently so I can begin my project. So, planning and zoning did approve, or recommend approval, and so be happy to take questions. Thank you for the consideration.
Questions for Aaron right now? Don't go far, there may be some in a minute.
You bet.
Okay. Steph?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner. Mr. Buckaloo pretty well said what I would say. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this for you.
That was a terrible way to get out.
Do we have any openings in the...
Any questions for Matt while he's up there? Okay. Matt, have you received any correspondence at all?
I have not, Mayor.
Have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we will look for any testimony of those supporting the application. Any testimony of those uncommitted to the application. Any testimony of those opposed to the application. Then there's really no reason to have a rebuttal if nobody's had a...
Raised issue.
Raised any issue, and so I would declare the public hearing closed. Council, this items be filed. You wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of Agenda Item Number 7, the contract rezone for the vacant land on South First Avenue.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 8, Final Platte SIA Tuscany Plaza Building 100. Mike Holdo of Strategic Investments Alliance, represented by Justin Steffer of Wade Surveying, has submitted a request to subdivide 1.123 acres, more or less, into five condominium units. The subdivision, SIA Tuscany Plaza Building 100, is located at the corner of East Center Street and Hospital Way. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the preliminary plat at their meeting on January 24, 2018, and recommend approval with conditions. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this final plat of the SIA Tuscany Plaza Building 100, and this would be subject to the conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Proposed Amendments to Sign Ordinance 15.20 Determining Distance for Notice Requirements. Council may wish to determine the distance for noticing requirements for off-premise signs either 300 feet or 500 feet in Municipal Code 15.20. Following this determination and ordinance, we'll be prepared for council's action at a further meeting. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the 500 feet to be written into the upcoming ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Is there any discussion? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Newton, it's not a public hearing, and so it's... We just get to watch at this point until there's a public hearing again, so...
Okay. Well, I guess that was the conversation we were...
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 10, Bid Contract for Seventh Avenue and Sherman Street Bus Transfer Station Project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following request regarding the Seventh Avenue and Sherman Street Bus Transfer Station Project. A, Accept the lower-responsive bid received on March 13, 2018, from Harper Construction Incorporated in the amount of $183,363.70 for base bid, and $31,716.63 for alternatives 1 through 4, for a bid total of $215,080.33. And if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and Harper Construction Incorporated in the amount of $215,080.33 for the Seventh Avenue and Sherman Street Bus Transfer Station Project, subject to legal department review. This is a federally funded project, $200,000. Local match funds for the project will be $50,000, $25,000 from the community development block grant, and $25,000 in city staff labor design and construction oversight. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this bid contract for the Seventh Avenue and Sherman Street Bus Transfer Station. We understand that this includes the alternatives 1 through 4 for a total of $215,080.33, and that we authorize you, the mayor, to execute this agreement between the City of Pocatello and Harper Construction, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Concessions Permit Request, Portnif Ice Mobile Ice Cream Truck. Council may wish to grant an exception to city ordinance City Code 5.06.020 to allow Jordan Mikesel DBA Portnif Ice to operate a mobile ice cream concessions on city streets. If granted, Ms. Mikesel will be required to provide necessary liability insurance, naming the city as an additional insured, as well as meet the Southeast Idaho Public Health requirements and pay all applicable fees due, permit fees due. City Council approved... Approval is required for this permit based on concessions operation on city streets is not specifically identified in City Code 5.06.020 as a public place where concessions are allowed. Council has approved similar exceptions, requests for mobile concessions on city streets in past years.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
I'd move approval of Agenda Item Number 11, the concession permit request for Portnif Ice Mobile Ice Cream Truck, and I wonder if anybody is here representing them.
Hi.
Let me get a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a... Do you want her to come up?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up.
You seconded us.
Where are those samples?
Next time.
Next time. That's what they always say.
So, our plan is to be vending approximately three times a week in the summer, and...
That's all?
For now, yes. That'll be evenings. We won't go later than 8:30 PM for the noise, and that's about it. That's all I have right now.
You have routes set up yet?
I don't have a route set up yet.
Give me my address.
Okay.
Sounds like if you come by Thursday night...
We'll come by here. Just for now, we're just doing novelty ice cream. We would like to do some sort of fundraising for the animal shelter, so that's our plan right now.
Have you done this other places?
I grew up in Tappas Park Fundland, so I did a lot of vending. My grandfather owned it for 50 years, so I'm pretty familiar with it. And we have a 1965 Chevrolet Step Van. It's very cute, painted very cute, very friendly and inviting for kids. So, the idea is to be an inviting ice cream truck that parents aren't afraid of.
It's always good.
Great to see that back in town.
Yep, super. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pro ice cream.
Yeah, definitely pro ice cream. Agenda Item 12, Water Connection Request, 6541 South Fifth Avenue. Council may wish to consider a request from Butts Fence Company LLC, represented by Lee Butts, to connect a parcel of land, commonly known as 6541 South Fifth Avenue, to the city's water and sanitary sewer system to allow the connection of a shop...
Construction.
Construction, I'm sorry, construction of a shop. The utility connection annexation covenant has been completed, and all associated connection fees and costs have been paid. Outside-city limits, utility rates will be charged until the property is annexed.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Adamson?
I move that we approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Surplus Declaration Ford Ranger Truck. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and declare an inoperable 1998 Ford Ranger pickup truck as surplus and approve the sale to Pacific Recycling. The truck is no longer capable of being put into service and is not usable by any other department. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the surplus declaration of Ford Ranger truck.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. I might just add that the council is in favor of the mayor actually driving this truck, and so I appreciate, hopefully they pass this to go to surplus. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14 is an ordinance. An ordinance which annexes a parcel of land comprised of approximately 11.87 acres owned by Brush Meadows LLC. The parcel is located at 5096 South Fifth Avenue and will be zoned residential, commercial, professional, RCP, with a comprehensive plan designation of mixed use. Council, how would you wish to have this ordinance read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance Agenda Item Number 14A be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the whole ordinance be published. Is that right?
Well, no, still the summary.
Still the summary.
Yes.
And that only the summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning an 11.87 acre parcel of land located in the west half-northwest quarter of Section 8 Township 7 South, Range 35 EPM, Bannock County, by extending the city corporate boundaries to include 5096 South Fifth Avenue, more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bannock County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for the said land to be zoned residential, commercial, professional, RCP, and the comprehensive plan map designation being mixed use, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that the ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14B, An Ordnance to Rezone By Contract Approximately 1.20 Acres of Undeveloped Land in the northwest corner of Poline and Eldridge Roads and east of Faith Evangelical Church of Residential Commercial Church from residential, commercial, professional, RCP to residential medium-density, single-family RMS to light industrial LI for the sole use of an electrical substation owned by Idaho Power pursuant to a Pocatello Municipal Code 17.02.180BI, subject to conditions. Council, how do you wish this to be read? Councilman Cheatham?
I move the ordinance Agenda Item 14B be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, changing approximately 1.20 acres of land identified as attractive land at the northwest corner of Poline and Eldridge Roads and east of Faith Lutheran Evangelical Church located in the northeast quarter, southwest quarter of Section 15 Township 6 South, Range 34 EPM, Bannock County, Idaho, from zoning designations of residential, commercial, professional, and residential medium-density, single-family, to light industrial for the sole use of an electrical substation owned by Idaho Power, said parcel more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too, providing that the official zoning map be amended to incorporate this rezoning, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen C, An Ordinance to Rezone By Contract Approximately 2.34 Acres of Undeveloped Land Located in the 3900 Block of Hawthorne Road Between 3942 and 3916 Hawthorne Road, From Residential Medium Density Single Family RMS To Residential High Density RHS, Pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 17.02.180BI, Subject to Conditions. Council, how do you wish this to be read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance, Agenda Item Fourteen C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, changing approximately 2.34 acres of land in the 3900 Block of Hawthorne Road Between 3940 and 3916 Hawthorne Road, Vannick County, Idaho, from zoning designation of residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential high-density RH, said parcel more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too, providing that the official zoning map be amended to incorporate this rezoning, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen D, An Ordinance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code 6.04.030, Nuisance Prohibited, Providing Restrictions and Regulations for Animals During the Certain Times of the Year in the City's Golf Courses. Council, how do you wish the ordinance to be read?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Adamson?
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Fourteen D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Chapter 6.04.030, Nuisances Prohibited, in the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, providing restrictions and regulations for animals during certain times of the year on city golf courses, and providing that this ordinance and the provisions contained here and established pursuant to this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law, the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions having been dispensed with.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a 15 minutes total for this, and three minutes per person. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, 4963 Yellowstone Chubbick. We all stood in this room and made a pledge. We pledged allegiance to that flag which represents we, the people of the United States of America, our Christian virtues, free and dependent republic under God. And in that context, I opposed the position appointment. I also opposed other actions done by the city.
So we're- you're talking about an agenda item.
And I have that right.
Okay, thank you very much. Nikki, Nikki, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and conclude the meeting. Thank you very much. Nikki was the only one that was- that signed up for the agenda item, so thank you very much. Thank you for attending tonight.